For the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could call rules, please.
Councilmember Kenfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hatches.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember T. Lander.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here.
I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion. Support?
Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Kenfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatches.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember T. Lander.
Yes.
I agree, citizen comment, right, it's not on the agenda? All right, noble business puts us to number five, new business, item A, mobile food vending ordinance?
Good evening, meresty council. At the request of council, we are bringing back our first draft of the food truck ordinance. The city attorney drafted this based on a discussion we had, and we modeled this after ordinance from some other communities, and we're gonna have that discussion here in a minute. One thing that we haven't really talked about yet in this issue is any type of licensing fees we would set up in that matter, and I'm sure we probably need more discussion on that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to the city attorney so he can, he can explain to you the ordinance that's being proposed.
Thank you, good evening. What I'm gonna do is, like Mike said, I've got to look at several ordinances, including Burn Dale, Grand Rapids ordinance, and the City of Marquette, actually the City of Marquette's ordinance, which has just recently been revised to be most helpful. I tried to keep it, I'm short, as possible, if you look at Grand Rapids ordinance, it's some twenty-some pages long, so I didn't think that was necessarily appropriate here. And without walking you through this word for word, let me just try to summarize some of the points that are in it, and then you can ask me questions, if you'd ask me questions. One thing to keep in mind is we're really talking about two different kinds of food vehicles. One is a food cart, which is something which is either pushed or some way operated by bicycle or something like that, rather than a motor. And then we're talking about a food truck or a food trailer, either of which are pulled by some engine vehicle, motor vehicle of some, some sort, either the truck itself or a trailer that's being trucked. So keep, keep that in mind as we go through this. And as Mike also mentioned, one of the first provisions in this ordinance is to require licensing, so everyone would be required to have a license. And usually a license is granted for a year period. This ordinance provides that it's a period that would run from May 1st through April 30th, and that it's non-transferable, and it's non-refundable. And in looking at what other communities have done, you need not necessarily have one single license fee. And I'll kinda give you some idea of the different types of fees that you may want to consider, because what this ordinance does provide is that by resolution, you establish the fees, rather than in the ordinance, because it's much easier than if you wanna change the fee from time to time, you just do it by, by resolution. But you can charge a license to operate either in the city, or on the, in the city and on private property, or just on private property. You could charge a special fee for a taxpaying brick-and-mortar restaurant that has a food truck, which is usually a little bit less, because they're taxpaying. Or a special fee just for food carts, and again, food carts either operating on city property, or city-controlled property, or private property. Or a special fee for food carts that just sell pre-prepared and packaged materials for food, which is usually what most food carts do, except I think it may be an ice cream cart or something like that. So that is one thing that you'll wanna keep in mind when you establish the license fee, is do you wanna have a series of different licenses for different situations? Do you wanna have a license for less than a year? Do you wanna have a license for an event only? The way this is written, as far as where the food truck, or the food cart can operate, is it can operate on private property that is not residential, and any private property with the approval of the private property owner. If a food truck is to operate in a residential area, which you'll run into from time to time, someone may wanna have a graduation party, for example, and have a food truck there, and that requires special permission to make sure, and I think I wrote it this way, that the chief of police would, would get the approval for that, because you deal with parking, potential parking and traffic problems in residential areas. The other place that food trucks can operate is on city-owned or city-controlled property. And the way this ordinance is written is you would, again, by special resolution, because again, you may wanna change it from time to time, designate those areas in which food trucks would be located. You know, would you want them allowed in parking lots? In summer, all of the parking lots? Are there parts along the street where they would be permissible, and other parts where they would not be permissible? So you wanna think about where would you, on city-owned or city-controlled property, would you wanna permit these food trucks to be located? And you may wanna start small, and then depending on demand, you may wanna increase, increase that. The applicant, or the operator must file an application with the clerk, and if you go to page three, it identifies, up at the top of page three of the ordinance, it identifies what's to be included in the application. And probably most notably is number six, and that is, they would be required to have public liability insurance, naming the city as an additional insurer, and that is something that I saw in all the ordinances, by the way, that I looked at, there was a requirement that they have that. Also, one of the things that I put in, if you look at the paragraph right under six, was a requirement that there must be a fire safety inspection, in this case, conducted by the Lowell Area Fire and Emergency Services Authority. There may be a fee that you could charge for that, I suspect that there probably would be. And then, if applicable, applicants will be required to provide satisfactory proof of propane inspection, so if they're operating with propane gas, they have to have, as I understand it, their operation inspected, their propane operation inspected. If you go to, and I won't go through all of these, if you go to bottom of page three, top of page four, it lists a whole series of things, requirements with respect to food vending, and I'm just gonna highlight some of those, and I can answer questions on others if you have questions. If you look at number two, it says if operating on city-owned or controlled property, may only locate on property identified under city council resolution. If you go down in number six, mobile food vending units utilizing public parking spaces or parked on public streets shall conform to all applicable parking regulations, and shall not hinder lawful parking or operation of other vehicles. Down in number thirteen, at the bottom, there's a reference to the city code sections on noise, so they must comply with the city's provisions related to noise. Number twenty is, is one that you wanna note, this is something that sometimes is pretty controversial. The way this is written, it requires that mobile food vending units parked on city-owned or controlled property shall not be parked within one hundred and fifty feet of an entrance of an existing brick-and-mortar restaurant during the hours when the restaurant is open for business. Usually that's a requirement that the restaurants have in town, they just don't want someone out in front of them competing against them, unless they get permission, so there are probably some instances where they, they might do that. If there were, for example, a coffee food truck, they might, they might permit something like that, rather than a food food truck. And then number twenty-two, another requirement on spacing, it says, the unit shall be at least twenty-five feet from all intersections and driveways, that's a sort of a safety, a safety requirement. They have to comply with the parking regulations that the city has, so they can't park in no parking areas. If they don't comply with the requirements of, of this chapter of this ordinance, their equipment can be impounded at the owner's expense. And then revocation and complaints received, the city clerk has the authority to revoke a license on receiving notification from a law enforcement officer observing a violation of the chapter, or a situation that is adverse to affecting public health and safety. Complaints can also be filed against food truck vendors, if they're not, and their license can be suspended, or denied, or revoked. And if they're not satisfied, satisfied with the decision of the city clerk to do that, they can appeal to the city manager, and then the city manager makes a final determination. If they're not satisfied with that, then of course they can seek whatever legal remedies they might have in court. Last section of page six authorizes, I mean, the police chief, the police chief and sworn officers of the police department and such other officials designated by the city manager are authorized to issue appearance tickets. And then finally, a violation of this ordinance is considered to be a civil confriction and is subject to a five hundred dollars per day fine. So that's kind of a summary of the content of this. Again, just to keep this in mind, you would need to adopt a resolution as a companion to this, establishing your fee schedule, and identifying city-owned or city-controlled property where you would permit food trucks or food carts to be located. And with that, I'll be happy to answer questions.
If they appear to be selling, but that last thing that you pointed out, that the vendor violating this chapter commits a civil confriction and is subject to a five hundred dollars per day fine, if they were to violate that at, say, eleven o'clock in the morning, they could continue to violate it all day. And I'm just thinking that they must see some dissent, because, I don't know.
Well, the, the other thing is, the city clerk then could also move up the license only if the license is, and they have to go with the, 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 they're on the, yeah.
If, if they got some kind of, this thing, that they, they might be making a thousand dollars bet.
Right.
Might be worth their while.
Worth their while.
So, anyway, that is.
Good point, yeah.
The, the question I saw that, and the Grand Rapids also makes them, the fire department inspect them, so if they were inspected by Grand Rapids, would they be okay if they came here then, or would we have them be inspected by our fire department as well?
Yeah, you'd be inspected individually, different fire boats for different areas.
Fine.
Grand Rapids isn't gonna allow stuff by high-rise apartment buildings that we would allow in a parking lot here.
So even if they were inspected by Grand Rapids, would they come here?
That's the way it's written.
Okay, so that's.
Plus, they're mobile, they're mobile, there's no way to track any changes or additions to the equipment, stuff like that. It would require one for jurisdiction, for time.
By entrance, are you talking front entrance or back rear entrance?
Oh, the twenty-five feet.
On the hundred and fifty feet.
Alan, it means any entrance into the public right-of-way.
Okay, so a hundred and fifty feet would probably.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet?
Oh, intersection.
Okay, so.
For the intersection, are you talking about a restaurant?
I'm talking about a mobile food, number twenty, parked on a city-owned or controlled property.
Oh.
Shall not be parked with a hundred and fifty feet.
That would pretty much rule out this back parking lot here.
Right, that would.
Maybe south and row. I was thinking about that.
I think it refers to the main entrance to the establishment.
It's to the establishment, it's the main entrance of the establishment, where, where the public comes and goes.
We have, like, sneakers in center, most here have entrances on both sides.
Both sides.
So would that rule out that parking lot as being too close?
Probably would, yeah.
But you, there's a, there's a provision in there for receipt of permission, right, from?
From the, from the restauranteer, yes.
Which, you know, they're, they're back there for Riverwalk, not food trucks, but there's, they're serving food, there's an ice cream cart, early concert series, and it hasn't been an issue yet. I think it's just how much information you share with them, as to how willing they're gonna be there.
Well, but it'd be a hundred and fifty feet from the main entrance and seventy-five feet from the secondary, because I think that the north side, the secondary door.
I agree.
The main door would be on the front.
The other option would be just to simply, note that as an exception, that parking lot is an exception to the hundred and fifty feet. Yeah. So we're running into this one here and that one there.
Or during.
You tie it to events.
Yeah, you tie it to events. Yeah. I think that would factor in that in permit fees, too.
Right.
And you're gonna charge, different for Riverwalk that you want for a Tuesday night in February, you know what I mean?
And all the other things, fees, right?
Yeah, we probably, yeah, that's, that's the thing, I know we came before about some different fee item, you know, fee ideas. I think some of those concerns for the, for the fees that we set may have been mitigated somewhat by some things that have occurred with the initial, how this initially started. So I'm not so, I'm not so sure the fee structure needs to be as high, but I think there's other caveats that I don't think we thought of before that we probably need to address, like, for example, just the events, you would charge, like, for a one-day, a one-day pass for Riverwalk, or a three-day pass for, I don't think we ever, I mean, it wasn't something that, obviously, I hadn't experienced with, where I could really think about that, but obviously after going to Riverwalk for the first time, the, the time you're gonna see the food trucks, really is during Riverwalk. I don't, I don't, I'm not so sure now with, like, for example, I think you're gonna see more food trucks and stuff, I always say you'll probably see in more businesses where the, where the sandwich, where the taco truck goes at lunchtime, you're probably gonna see more of that. I don't see them, I don't know if this situation now, because of some of the changes that were made to brewery, where you're gonna have a food truck on site, where, because it doesn't seem like they're gonna need one anymore. Where, in a downtown district, that would, those food trucks would be, would be common, I'm not so sure now we're gonna have that.
You're about to demand.
Which is kinda like, yeah, which is kinda like, we didn't push it as, as fast as we did, because they were making, New Union was making changes, that we weren't so sure, we weren't so sure that, the reason why we were working on the ordinance is for, to address that situation, obviously in other situations, but that situation has changed, so. Maybe, maybe what I do is maybe at the next council meeting, I can come back, at least with some proposed ideas for, for license fees, and we can discuss that before we would to, maybe make, you know, make a.
The breakdown, where are we going, like, we should make an additional strain on the police department to enforce and check on these, I don't think that they should be free of any compensation, but.
Yeah, I would encourage you, at the same time that you adopt the ordinance, you adopt the resolution establishing the fees, and also the location where they can be located on city, city property or city-controlled property. And one comment, if I may, on fees, just keep in mind that by law you're required to set a fee that represents your cost in administering that operation, and so you just can't arbitrarily set a fee, otherwise, of course, that's an illegal tax, you know what I mean? We always are constrained, whenever we set fees for the city, that we reflect our, our legal link to your actual administrative cost in the fees.
Would I make consensus to look at those three or four items and move to old business for the next meeting?
And I'd encourage you maybe just to touch base with those, she might have some department, my partner.
Yeah, sure.
So, yeah.
Consent?
So.
Yes. Item B, Resolution twenty-eight seventeen for the park agreement in Lowell.
Tatch has a resolution agreement between the city and Lowell youth football to change their park usage contract. This is a standardized three-year contract with the option to renew annually after. Each NST will be notified by November the year prior if there'll be an increase to the participation fee. This agreement is identical to the previous agreements that you approved for Backyard Dreams, Lowell Little League, and the YMCA. The park board did not review this since they did not meet in July, I did have a conversation with their chairman, Perry Beecham, and he had no issue with this moving forward, recommending that the city council approve the agreement and resolution for Lowell youth football as presented.
Okay, so it was on parks and recreation, Terry, when we did the Little League and Backyard Dreams contract, and we made that what we thought were any changes. So I will make the motion that we approve the agreement and resolution for Lowell youth football as presented.
I'll second. Discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatches.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember T. Lander.
Yes.
And Councilmember Kenfield.
Yes.
Item C, city parks signage.
Throughout previous years, the youth fair, Lowell youth football, and Lowell Little League have allowed to place several temporary banners on the fences surrounding their fields. While this provides donations from businesses sponsoring such banners, it does not coincide with our current sign ordinance. The definition of a temporary sign is a display informational sign, banner, or other advertising device with or without structural frame and intended for a limited period of display. One temporary sign shall be permitted for each separate establishment located on a parcel of land. A temporary sign shall be placed for not more than sixty days in a calendar, calendar year, and shall be no larger than thirty-five square feet, and shall not be illuminated. What is occurring is that the signage at Creekside Park and at Birch Field can only be seen in the proximity of those fields. Oncoming traffic generally doesn't see them. Concern was made by the Parks and Recreation Commission about signage on the fencing surrounding the fairgrounds property, where traffic can see those and might be affected by them. Anyways, none of the, none of these instances are in compliance with our ordinances. During negotiation of the agreement for the Kent County Fairgrounds, signage concerns were shared to the fair regarding park board's concerns, and their response was, this is being allowed with some of our other entities. While I have mentioned the districts, differences listed above, they're not, they're not incorrect on that. In talking with our planner, Annie Moore, from Williams and Works, he suggested the sign ordinance be revised, allowing such banners ten days before and after an event for a period of one month. Because such a revision may take some time to complete, the council should consider such banners a governmental sign, because it is in relation to a community event until the ordinance is updated. More also, as suggested as part of the amendment, we liberalize temporary sign requirements for community events. It is important to note that these, these organizations have utilized banners in this way for many years. However, there have been complaints regarding the condition of these banners. The city council needs to determine how they would like the city administration to enforce this ordinance. Would they like, would you like us to enforce the ordinance as is, or would we wanna consider revising our ordinances to accommodate these concerns? I'm approaching the city council this evening, just to gather information on this matter, and, and I'm not requesting action at this time.
I'd just point out that it's a kind of snowball, that years ago, we didn't have nearly as many banners, we had a few, and now we've got many, and it is quite unsettling, and I don't think it adds to our community when you come in from the south and that fence is just lined. From an advertising and marketing standpoint, if there's, you know, maybe five or six, you notice them. But it's just, looks, it's a smithering of signage, quote that, but smithering of signage that, you don't notice, kind of picking one of them. I was picked up. And, but anyway, I think it's deluded and it's self-defeating, and I don't think they're doing anything more than raising money for, for themselves, not just the fair, but then also Lowell League and football and so forth, or the banners are just out of control, and I guess we're the ones that's supposed to be controlling, so good luck, but yes, we need to do something.
Okay.
Now, I know I coffee with council, excuse me, we had some people, I think their concern was more along the lines of the ones in the yard, do you remember that, Grant? Yeah. So that's under that umbrella as well, correct?
Obviously so, yeah. There, how does that, you can explain that order to private, and I can't.
For signage and people's garlands?
I think they, they noticed some that were, you know, out and about, and they brought it to our attention.
And those are fine, as long as it's, like, within a certain square footage, they do not incriminate for those.
Okay, and there's no timeline on those either?
No.
Okay.
It's also the signs people are putting in the right-of-way, you know, die casting, there's hiring or whatever, that there's, there's a lot of signs that people just put, stick.
Well, then that's our, then that's part.
Those are.
Signs are not allowed in the right-of-way.
And I know, I've noticed in some communities, like, I think I brought this to Mike, I think William might have had one where city hall, museum, library, where they had those nice digital signs, where they'd scroll special events, or yard sales, or things that are going on, and at TPW or someplace where you can get the word out, where you don't have that stuff all over, and sometimes that's kind of nice to where, you know, then they could go through you, and then you can monitor it that way, and you're getting out to a lot of people, in, you know, a couple areas where you don't have all that. But that just costs money, so. Down road.
Everyone in.
For the discussion. I think we're good, okay. Number six, monthly reports. Discussion on monthly reports. Board of commissioners reports, Jeffrey.
The historic district commission is tomorrow night, six o'clock, and I was grateful enough, and I'm gonna turn it over to the man who knows everything, I was at Lowell Light and Power board meeting, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, you made me feel so welcome. This man knows everything, and he's so passionate about it, that I couldn't do a justice, justice, so I'm just gonna turn it over to him, and he's gonna let you know everything that's going on over there, because he's really putting us in a great place.
Surprise.
Thank you.
The more you learn, the less you'll real, or the more you'll realize how lit, how I don't know much. However, you can say that, because the more I learn about electricity, the more I realize I have a lot to learn. Anyway, the Light and Power board meeting, we had seven action items, three pertain to Lowell Light and Power's five-year plan, and I thought I'd take a moment to update the council. Last year, in 2016, the Light and Power board approved a five-year plan through our engineers, GRP Engineering, and GRP Engineering did a system study of Light and Power's distribution system, and came up with thirteen projects that they recommend doing over the next five years, and those projects total around $2.8 million. And we just completed the first project this past June, and we approved engineering service proposals for three more projects. And really, the projects are designed to upgrade the reliability and redundancy of Lowell Light and Power's infrastructure, replacing poles, replacing transformers, and upgrading our system voltage from 4,160 volts to 12,470 volts. That reduces our electric line losses, which cuts Lowell Light and Power's expenses. And this past meeting, we, the engineering service proposals we approved were for capacitor banks or electrical pieces of equipment on our system that increases our power factor and decreases line losses. We approved infrastructure upgrades at the substation, the substation is fifteen years old now, there just needs to be equipment replaced, and the building of a brand-new circuit, number two oh three, you'll see work being done from the substation to across M-21, we're gonna have some board work done, and that'll reduce load on circuit two oh five. So we have a lot going on at Light and Power. Jeff also asked me before the meeting to share about the national conference I attended. Lowell Light and Power is part of the American Public Power Association, they represent 2,000-plus municipal electric utilities, just like Lowell, and I was able to attend the national conference for the first time. There were a lot of great keynote speakers and breakout sessions, and really, high-level industry topics of where the industry is going. industry topics of where the industry is going, and some of the key topics were solar and wind and renewable energy. In the past, those were just things that people focused on to become more green or emit less carbon, but they weren't cost-effective. Because of many federal grants and tax credits and subsidies, the market has become such that many people are buying and investing in renewable energy sources just because they're cost-effective. So Lowell Light Power has entered into wind purchase power agreements, we have biomass agreements, but in the future, community solar or different types of solar agreements with other municipals Lowell Light Power will be looking at, and battery storage is another really big one. So solar, obviously the sun shines during the day. The wind, it blows typically more at night and in remote areas, so to harness the value of renewable energies, you have to either build transmission lines, which are very, very expensive, or you need somewhere to store that energy, and batteries are catching up quickly, and the cost on them is being reduced tremendously. You have companies like Tesla investing billions of dollars in batteries. So we're not there yet, but you can expect renewables and batteries to be the way of the future, and just monitoring that, making sure we can do what's best for Lowell's energy needs in renewables going forward. So Jeff, if you'd like me to share anything else, let me know.
I probably would've said the exact same thing, but I appreciate that. And I know that you talked about a speaker there that was very motivational.
Yeah, at the chair's breakfast Wednesday morning, there was a lieutenant from the USS Cole. Before nine eleven, there was a terrorist attack in the Middle East, and he was the admiral on the ship, I believe, or the head of the ship, and there was a couple suicide bombers that attacked the ship. He lost, I believe, in the neighborhood of sixteen, seventeen men, multiple people were injured. He talked about making the best decision with the information you have, talked about leadership, talked about just teamwork, and it was, he's done this presentation or speech many times, but it just put chills on everybody's arms. I had a tear in my eye, I'm an emotional guy, you guys probably don't know that, but it was just very inspiring. It wasn't a conference just about electricity, but other intangibles and qualities that they feel like leaders need to focus on or try to improve. So it was just a great motivational speech.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. And Steve's that, Steve's that man with Ryan and everybody else there. You got a great team, and thank you for leading us into the future.
You're welcome, thanks.
Let's turn it on. Nope. Got that.
Nothing?
No.
I'm just glad Jeff got to go to that meeting because he gushes just like I would if I hadn't been to that meeting, so yeah, we love our Light and Power guys.
Good. I have nothing either. Thanks to your turn, city manager.
Okay. Well, I attended my first Riverwalk festival, fun every night. I rode in a fire truck.
That's right, you did.
I rode in a fire truck. But no, all in all, it was a great event, I was really impressed with it. Was, I had a lot of fun, I was there every day, I really enjoyed it, and it was really good for the community, I thought, plus the weather was pretty decent, so. There's been no update with Chief Bucelup, nothing has occurred since the last time I spoke on the matter. Just a reminder that August seventh at 5:30 will be the committee of the whole meeting regarding the medical marijuana topic. Today, I was actually able to authorize the purchase of the iPads, so hopefully we get those here relatively soon. The phone project, the phones are in place. Couple of little bugs we've had to deal with, but I mean, for the last couple, we've had them about three weeks, and people are getting comfortable with them, I haven't heard hardly any complaints about them, and it's been, it's been a relatively smooth transition, I think, so we actually had a final meeting today with Adorio and.
High Point Consulting.
High Point Consulting, and just talked about the project, and I think we were relatively pleased with how they handled this project, they did a really good job. Tomorrow, Public Works Director and I will be traveling to Saginaw to take a tour of their splash pad. Rich was involved, followed in that project when he was working for the city Saginaw a few years back. And then on Wednesday, myself, Public Works Director, Liz Baker, and Luded DeGostino, and I think some other people, Myrick, I don't know if you're going, if you're going. We're going to, we're gonna start our morning in Grand Lodge, where we're going to take a tour of, a person who's been working with us, they've been, they're in the process of constructing a showboat right now, and we're gonna go take a look at that showboat, and then later in the afternoon, we're gonna go to Lansing and ride, or go to the showboat that they have in Lansing, and tour that, so looking forward to that, and that's really all I have in this time.
Thank you. Tell us your comments, Jeffrey.
I'd just like to thank all staff and employees for their hard work and dedication.
Mr.?
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Nothing major, just like to encourage the citizens to reach out to your council members and let them know what's on your mind, how you feel about some of these topics, because that helps us make our decisions, so don't be afraid to approach us pretty much anywhere, and let us know how you feel or what questions you have.
Do you ask? Andrew, up, twenty-two oh four G drive. Where's the pickleball court?
Down at the new park.
Oh, that's in town. Town.
Is it there yet?
No, it's in the township.
My sister told me to say that.
You always do it, your sister tells you?
Thank you very much.
Alan.
I agree, if you can make it to coffee with council, it's a great way to communicate with us and let us know your ideas. Other than that, on the first, I'm going to Gaylord to go to a Michigan Municipal League little seminar on medical marijuana, and long drive, but I think it's worth it because I need to know as much as I can about that topic, and then I'm going to head over to Traverse City. I have a childhood friend that I've discovered, he's growing or working on having a factory or some, he has a greenhouse, and so he's working his way through that process, so I wanna know his side of it. And I've met with the guys who want to do it here, and they're very interesting, and there's a lot of good things to consider, from veteran benefits to cancer benefits, and that's why I wanna learn, so that's all I have.
Okay. I will encourage everyone to go to the farmer's market near to five every Thursday and a concert at seven. And then Mr. Hunt?
I have mobile insurance, seven o'clock.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.